Evening, I'd like to call a meeting to order. We'll start it now six and we'll call the roll. And then we'll have the pledge of allegiance and then we'll have time for public comment. We don't have a formal agenda, there's really just one item on the agenda, but we always have public comment, that public comment time is time to talk about anything that you would like to bring up. We ask that you reserve comments for the public hearing on the matter that is the subject of the public hearing, that is the fire safety assessment. So with that, please call roll.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoffst, present. Brzezo, absent. Carey?
Here.
Noel?
Present.
Riser, absent, expected later. We have four.
Thank you. Please join the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance required of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if there's anyone here who would like to speak during public comment, you have three minutes to address us on any topic that you like, although again, we ask that you reserve comments for the subject of the public hearing until we get to that point. Yes, if you would like to make a public comment, please come forward.
Anybody?
Yeah, just have a seat.
Well, yeah, my name is Jim Cameron. Thank you for having me. I'm here because I was told in the thing that you sent out that you had to protest formally if you wanted to appeal. I'm protesting. I don't know how that works, but.
We can't hear you.
Oh. What I said was, I looked at the materials that they sent out and the material said if you wanted to appeal the levy, you had to protest. So I'm protesting.
Where do we sign it?
So anyway.
I can't hear one word you said.
Testing.
Microphones work?
They should.
About that.
It's okay, try it again. Hi, is that help, is that on?
Yes.
I'm close.
You don't hear anything.
All right, does that work?
Yes.
Let's do the podium and then they can stand kind of at an angle, then they could hear in the back.
That's what's happening.
Try the acoustics here, because the audio's going to Zoom right now. And so I think Jillian's right, we need to turn the voices to the side there.
Okay.
That's what's gonna happen. Yep, I think Jillian, Jillian's got the right idea. All right, bear with us. Okay, ready? Yeah, add a name though, if you don't.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If you want to put this stamp for the mic.
Okay, I'm sorry, can anybody hear me now?
Yeah.
My name is Jim Cameron. I read in the materials that were sent out that in order to make an appeal of the levy at some point, possibly to the state tax tribunal or here, I don't know, you had to be present here tonight or send a letter and you had to file a, say you were formally protesting. So I'm formally protesting. That's really my purpose for being here, although I do have one question. Can somebody tell me how much revenue this is gonna generate if it goes to the four and a half mils?
4.3 million.
So Mr. Cameron, this time is actually meant for the public comment that isn't related to the ballot proposal. That ballot proposal portion, the public hearing will be preceded by a presentation by Chief Hood and I think that will answer, may answer some of these questions. So that, that was sort of the plan.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
No protest.
I have your, I have your protest recorded, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you. And if you, if you choose you would make more comments during the public hearing, you're welcome to do so.
Thanks.
I, I'll get it.
I can tell you. A chicker unit.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there are, are there any more comments that aren't related to the ballot proposal for the fire assessment? If there are any non-public hearing comments, this is the time for those. And then if there are none, then we'll move on to the public hearing. Please come forward.
I don't need to come forward, I'm a teacher. I'm a project. I would like to know if you took our names and, and information when people came in. Because how will you know who's at the meeting? My understanding is we had to be here in order to protest, but I don't see anyone that took our information, certainly.
We will, ordinarily, the procedure is during the public hearing, people make a comment, they give their name and address.
At that point.
And we note it during the public hearing.
Do you want me up there?
If, if you would like to give your name and, and address now, that's, that's fine.
I hope everybody, I hope everybody will want to come up and give their name and address. I'm Jackie Alvarez, 331 Sciopillage Court, Unit 167, in Sciopillage condos. Is that good?
That's great, thank you.
Ann Arbor, 48103.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other public comments not related to the assessment, we can move on to the public hearing. Yeah, I'm trying to get to the public hearing where, where we're actually hearing comments about the assessment. It seems like there aren't any non, you know, yeah, let's move on to the public hearing, if we may. Are you here to speak about the assessment, the fire assessment? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so. Well, that's, we're moving now to that time on the agenda. We'll have a brief presentation by Chief Hood and then we'll hear from you and from everyone else who would like to make comments of any kind of the assessment.
Will zoom hand. Somebody in Zoom that wants to.
Is there a zoom, is the zoom hand about?
They're, well, I'm sure they're listening, so if you have your hand raised and you want to do public comment that is not related to the SAD, then keep your hand up. So next up is.
I just disappeared.
Yeah.
Okay, are you, are you here to speak about something other than the assessments?
We were, a printed agenda probably would have solved much.
Perhaps. I did announce the, the order of business at the beginning, but let's move on to the presentation, we'll, we'll then move into the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. If it would help, there were a number of questions that I've received from residents and from a previous public hearing that I could answer first before I jump into the presentation.
Sure.
Thank you. One resident asked how we get water to rural areas. Today, when we have a fire in an area that doesn't have municipal water, we send out our fire engine, which has either 500 or 1,000 gallons of water on it. We rely on our neighbors to bring a tanker out with extra water. On any significant fire, we would typically have about three water tankers from our neighbors. That would typically be Chelsea, Dexter, and Ann Arbor Township. That also depends on whether or not they have their vehicles in service. Right now, Ann Arbor Township does not, so we're gonna have to rely on another neighbor. If we were to have a second station, we would have one water tanker at each station. If a fire occurred in the north side of the township, the Zeeb station would send a fire engine and we would have a water tanker dispatched from our second station in Sciop Township immediately. That helps us not rely on our neighbors to bring water out. If we can't handle the fire, then we'd call on our neighbors to help. Last year, our last public hearing, there were some comments about, a resident stated that it looks like we just added $450,000 a year to the budget as we had firefighters going forward. That's actually correct. It cost us between labor costs, equipment costs, benefit costs, about $450,000 to hire three firefighters. And if we hire three firefighters a year, that would increase our cost by about $450,000. That is accurate. A resident asked, will this apply to homes or businesses? And will others pay less or no tax at all? This will apply equally to homes and businesses within the community. The only people that won't pay tax are those that are tax exempt, for example, a church or a government building. There's probably a few other, I'm using those two as examples. A resident asked, why don't we rely more on mutual aid? In conversations with Fire Chief in Ann Arbor, where we have a close border on the east side, where we have longer response times, they're not able to offer more assistance than they do today. In general, we request mutual aid from our neighbors much more than we provide mutual aid from our neighbors. So in essence, we are taking more resources from our neighbors than we're giving them. So we're more of a recipient of aid rather than a mutual equal exchange. There's been a lot of comments and I received one about fiscal oversight and management within Sciop. And another ties into that, well, this just go to parks or some other project. I absolutely have heard the comments about fiscal oversight in Sciop. I know this board and the manager are working to address that and I hope to have that done soon, they have that done soon. And will this go to parks or some other project? Absolutely not. If, if voters support a Public Act 33 millage, it's dedicated specifically for fire and I will be accountable to each and every one of you. If, if any resident has a question about our budget, where our money comes from and where it goes, come see me, I'll print you the documents and I'll go over with them, each one of you individually. You have my promise on that, I will be accountable to you. Will everyone be assessed the same? The assessment is based on the taxable value of your home. So if your home has the exact same value as your neighbor, yes, it'll be assessed exactly the same. If your home is worth one half of your neighbor's home value, you'll be assessed at half of that value. It's based on how much your home is worth. Some, a couple residents have asked about homeowners' insurance costs and how will this potentially affect them? I can't give a straight answer to that, because every insurance company uses a very different formula. Some insurance companies use distance to a fire station to establish homeowners' insurance rates. Some use what is called an ISO rating or an insurance services office rating. That applies townshipwide. And some of them use both of those and many other factors in varying degrees. What I can say is that a lower ISO rating due to better fire protection generally shows an insurance company there's less risk and oftentimes will result in a lower rating, as will a fire station four miles from your house versus one mile from your house. If your insurance company uses that criteria and you're much closer to a fire station, they could potentially lower your insurance rates. And Mr. Cameron asked if the full assessment is made of 4.5 mils, that would raise approximately $9 million in today's dollars. Other residents asked, is this going to hit me all at once? And the answer to that is no, this is part of a 10-year plan to build and staff a second fire station. That's the maximum amount we could get to a decade from now. I expect we'd raise a little bit at a time and I think my presentation will help talk a little more about the increments we'd see over time.
Please proceed with the presentation. Thank you.
And if folks want to, I can provide this document to you, it's a PowerPoint presentation. I'll walk through it, I can email you copies, I can print you copies, I can drop them off at your house. If anyone wants one, see me at the end and I'll get it to you. So what is Sciop Township asking voters to approve? Currently, we have an operating question, or an operating millage of one, up to 1.35 mils. Sciop Township is asking voters to increase that maximum authorization to no more than 3.75. This is under Public Act 33. Public Act 33 has a 10-mil maximum. Sciop's chosen to greatly restrict that, because we don't think we need the money. This is designed for gradual implementation over eight to 10 years. We would gradually see taxes rise as we build a building, as we add staff to it, until we get to the point where we're staffed adequately. We expect our second station, if voters authorize and approve this, to be built and operational by 2026 and fully staffed around 2031. This is in part due to difficulty in hiring firefighters. We expect we could probably hire about three a year until we get fully implemented. And we're asking a second question of voters too. This is a capital question. The capital question is no more than 0.75 mils. This one's a bit longer, this is a 20-year question. And the only purpose those funds can be used for is to fund a new fire station, new equipment for a new fire station, so we can't use that to replace vehicles we already have, and to purchase property. Those are the only three things that it can be used for. So what do Sciop residents have today for fire service? We've got a map of Sciop Township on, on the right side of the screen here and that red dot in the center is your fire station. It's just next door here on Zeeb Road. And today, we staff one fire engine with three firefighters. They're assigned, they're 75% of the time, we have three people on duty. About 25% of the time, we'll have a fourth on duty. So why are some of the reasons I was asking these questions now? Increasing population. If we look back to 1990, and I've only been here in Sciop for three years as the fire chief, probably a decade I've been in and out of the community, my kids go to the doctor here at the IHA building, I love the Meyer, I used to go to Goodrich Theater, obviously that's closed down. But back in 1990, if we take Dexter out of the equation, Sciop had about 9,000 residents. 2020 census puts us at about 17,500. There's significant residential and commercial development still coming to Sciop. If anyone's been down by Baker Road lately, I, I think there's a lot coming in the, in the community. One of the factors we evaluate is response times. We have a goal of getting to your emergency in six minutes or less, 90% of the time. Our current average is 10 minutes and 33 seconds, that's as of earlier this week, and we meet our six-minute objective about 45% of the time. And also, we look at increasing call volume. The year 2000, we ran 827 calls. This year, 1,450. And based on data as of yesterday, we should hit about 1,600 calls this year. It might be important to ask, where do our emergencies actually occur? And this should be a pretty intuitive, but our emergencies occur where more people are. That would be our heavy, more heavily traveled roads, our more densely populated areas of the township. And if we see on this map, that big center blob of red is Jackson and Zeeb, a lot of businesses, a lot of vehicles traveling through there and Sheriff's Office will tell you, we get a lot of car accidents right there. Baker and Jackson's pretty busy. Sciop Farms, a lot of folks in that area, densely packed in, respond there quite often. And also, on the east side of Wagner and down, I'm sorry, east side of Jackson near Wagner and the southeast corner, we've got a lot of dense population. When we compare that to our response time goals, Jackson and Zeeb, Sciop Farms, Baker and Jackson, we meet that with our six-minute response time goal. Where we're struggling is the east side of Jackson near Wagner and south Wagner, south of Jackson. We don't meet our response time goals in those areas. If we approve this, if voters approve this, these proposals, what would it fund? First of all, we would fully staff the Zeeb fire station, that would give us a fourth firefighter on duty. This would allow the township to build a new fire station and staff it. The township already owns property on Wagner at Liberty, just south. And this would provide planning for the next 20 years. Property in Sciop is going pretty quick. We anticipate sometime in the future, we may need a third fire station. The data does not indicate that today and I don't foresee that in the next five years. But we would like to secure property on the west side of the township, so when the data does show there's a need, we have the property available. Additionally, we want to fund replacement of the Zeeb Road station. Buildings have a lifetime expectancy of somewhere between 50 and 60 years with this type of use. Another 20 years or so will put us just over 50. So we want to secure property somewhere to replace the, the current building when it reaches the end of its life cycle. If approved, what will Sciop voters get? I mentioned we have one fire engine stationed at our, our Zeeb Road station. Each fire station would have one fire engine. We'd have a fire engine at the Zeeb Road station, a fire engine at the Wagner station. Three firefighters would be assigned to each of those fire engines. These engines would also be licensed to respond to medical emergencies, as they are today. Our Wagner Road station would staff a rescue with two firefighters. This would be a primary response vehicle for medical emergencies. It would be assisted by an engine or a ladder truck on more serious calls and it'd be licensed to transport. We're gonna work together with Huron Valley ambulance. We're gonna license it at the basic level, we won't have paramedics on it. But it would allow us to take a less serious call and transport someone to the hospital, for example, someone may have a dislocated elbow that doesn't need a paramedic to take him to the hospital and free that ambulance from Huron Valley back up, so that if there was a heart attack or something that required advanced care, they're still available. We'd have one officer in charge position, that's typically called a battalion chief. It's gonna be staffed with the senior officer on duty. He or she would supervise the day-to-day operations, the emergency operations. They'd serve as incident commander in Sciop on, on car accidents, vehicle fires, building fires, anything that's more than, that requires the majority of the resources in the township. That would be at our Zeeb Road station. So our Zeeb Road station does approximately 60% of our calls, they would be the first due for 60% of the emergencies in the township. Again, it'd have one fire engine and one officer in charge, a battalion chief, total of four personnel there. Our Wagner Road station, if the voters were to approve it, would be first due for 40% of our emergency calls. We'd have a ladder truck there, staffed with three firefighters and the rescue with two. This southeast section of the township contains the greatest number of responses outside our six-minute goal. This, this station location was picked to really drive down our response times. There'd be two separate primary coverage, coverage areas. Our one station, our station in the middle of township responds everywhere within Sciop as their primary area. If we have two stations, the area in yellow on the map would be our station two's primary response area. We've identified those areas as response times lower than what we would get from the Zeeb Road station. And anywhere left in white would be the Zeeb Road station, primary response area. On incidents that require more than one station to respond, obviously, every station or both our fire stations would respond to the emergency, no matter where it is. And if we look at the heat map comparison here, again, this, you've seen this map once already, but the areas in the center and the west that have the highest concentration of calls, we meet our response time goals. The areas to the east and southeast, we don't. This would correct that problem. What's a timeline to implementation look like? If voters give us the authorization this fall, winter 2024, we'd be able to complete building plans for a fire station, order vehicles, and hire three firefighters to fully staff our Zeeb station. Right now, to order a ladder truck, we have about a 12 to 18-month wait and a fire engine's about two years, as is a tank. I expect with voter approval and no problems, spring 2025, we'd be able to break ground on a building. Spring of 2026, we'd be able to open the station, which would necessitate hiring six firefighters in 2026. Each year after that, until we're fully staffed, we'd need about another three firefighters. Cost to implementation, my ballpark estimate, and it could be a little lower, it could be a little higher, is about a half a million dollars to operate a single fire station. That counts for the utilities, that counts for maintenance of the building, that counts for repairs, that counts for repairs of the vehicles. And also, that funds vehicle equipment replacement costs too. So we'll be putting money aside, so that when our fire engines ready to be replaced, we'd have the cash to pay for it and not have to bond. Addition of three firefighters costs about $450,000. Wages, benefits, gears and equipment, before we bring firefighters onboard, we do a full background investigation on them, because they're going into your homes, we do a full psychological evaluation and all those costs are upfront and as they work through the timeline to full pay, those costs balance out. So about $450,000 to hire three firefighters. If this is approved, about how much would this winter, winter's tax bill increase? If not approved, the, the township already has a 1.35 mil assessment, got a fire budget of about 2.25 million. Cost to an average homeowner, it's a home that's worth about $400,000 a year, you'd pay about 270 a year or 2250 a month. If this was approved, I'd ask the board to allocate about a half a million dollars towards building plans and a down payment on vehicles. That would bring our budget up to around 2.75 million. And that same homeowner, $400,000 home, let's see, about a $50 a year increase in fire tax, we've talked about 320 for 2026, 70 a month. And where can you get more information? Our email address is there, fire@scio township.org. That gets to myself, our administrative assistant Terry, and our assistant fire chief and one of us will get back to you within a day, generally. You can go to our website, sciop township.org backslash fire. Our phone number's there, 665-6001. You can ask for me, you can come up to the station and visit me and I will walk through anything you'd like to see. That being said, Mr. Supervisor, turn it back to you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. With that, I'd like to open the public hearing at 6:28. And just to reiterate, I know you've received the notice, but this hearing this evening is on the amounts of the assessment and that is all laid out in the notice. If there's any questions about that, we can try and address those. But if you're here to register a protest of the amount of the assessment, then please take your turn, tell us your name and address, let us know that that is what you're here to do, to protest, if that's what you are here to do. And that way, we'll have that record and you'll preserve your right to, to go to the tax tribunal. And with that, please take, come on up. I think we've determined that it helped, using the microphone, speaking directly into the microphone helps everyone to be heard and. And that's true, that's true, thank you. And just during public hearing, we allow everyone five minutes, up to five minutes, you don't have to speak for five minutes, to register your, whatever it is that you are, your comment is. Please come on up.
Michael Murphy, 2430 Sciop Road, 48130. I have one simple question, that I think it's already answered, but I'd like to have that made more clear, is currently we have 1.35 mil and that's covering the entire cost of a fire station. When we start adding millage to that, will that 1.35 still apply only to fire? Fire support?
Yes.
Hopefully will.
So this, if, if voters approve the ballot proposal, it will replace the 1.35 mils, it won't be.
In addition.
In addition to it. It's, the 1.35 mil assessment would be replaced by whatever the, the amount approved by the voters.
Makes the question a little bit more difficult. If the 1.35 is replaced, who in the Sciop Township gets to use that 1.35, seeing it's been freed up? That if the one point three five is replaced, who in the SIO Township gets to use that one point three five, seeing it's been freed up by replacement funds from the
It won't be assessed. It it the it's if the ballot measure is not approved in November, the one point three five mils assessment will remain in effect. If the voters approve the ballot proposal, then that one point three five assessment will just go away, it'll be replaced by the approved
So the one point three five would not be used for the funds inside.
No, would never be assessed. It would never appear on your tax bill.
So just, no, we're not paying. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come on up.
Comments? I'm protesting what you're proposing. Comments are available for anybody who would like to come along and answer back off I used to make my comments. My name is John Boyle. I'm a forty three year homeowner in SIO Township and a thirty five year real estate investor in SIO Township. My home is a thirty two eighty five Miller Road. And my businesses are, I'm big corrode. I also am a strategy consultant. I work with troubled companies, troubled municipal governments, troubled people. I suspect over the last forty years, I have developed a review of ten thousand financial reports. Now, I will add that my father and my uncle were FBI agents. And that virtually every male in my family was in the military, most of us, including me, in the combat arms. So I have a certain fondness for first responders. But that fondness does not preclude my right to address what I consider the financial malfeasance associated with the board's proposal to increase the tax rate for fire protection by two hundred and thirty eight percent. Especially in light of the fact that it was increased by fifty percent just four years ago from forty nine mils to one point three five mils. As I stated in the last town hall meeting, the board has not made the case, and that has not even attempted to make the case for an increase in the fire safety mileage, much less an increase of two hundred and thirty eight percent. Where is the analysis that makes the case for a two hundred and thirty eight percent increase? It's important to note that pursuant to Michigan law, proposal A nineteen ninety four, property taxes automatically increase at the lower of the increase in CPI or five percent. Over the last twenty five years, only once has that amount been more than five percent. So the rate, the the taxes are going up, the millage stays the same, the taxes go up based upon the automatic. So increasing the tax rate effectively multiplies the already equitable built in increase in property taxes that goes with it going up with inflation. Now, it is worth noting that according to the U.S. Census Bureau, SIO's township has decreased by, it went up, it's up from nineteen ninety, but it's decreased by ten point five percent over the last fifteen years. It actually has gone down, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. Suggesting a lower or flattened demand for fire department services versus what they were before. In the normal course of financial affairs, the process of requesting a budget increase would be as follows. This is what you will go through at Ford Motor Company. General Motors. DT Energy, bring them up with some trepidation. You would show three to five years of detailed income statements. In this case, for the fire department, detailing all of the revenue by source and each of the costs by component. So they can be tracked, so we can see what's going on. If the bottom line is negative, then it would be impending upon the folks in charge to track the components of revenue and costs that are problematic and seek options for change. Options to change the equation, and if there are cost components that management believes are locked in and cannot be changed, explain why they cannot be reversed or assuaged. That would be the normal process. Documents document that all revenue property is properly collected and used exclusively for fire protection. And that all costs are tracked and controlled. Show precisely, going forward, show precisely how the additional revenue will be used. Just as in the statements for the past, the statements going forward are the same. Where is the revenue coming from specifically? How much is it? And what are each of the cost components? In detail. As the proposed increase in special revenue is up to, at the discretion of the board, two hundred and thirty eight percent, that would amount to an additional four point three million. Now, in twenty twenty two, the last year for which we have financial report, fiscal year ends March thirty first, by the way. We don't have it for twenty twenty three yet, which ended March thirty first, twenty twenty three. The fire department, but the cost was two point one million. Now, if all of this proposed increase is laid in, that's four point three million. Andrew, I know you said it was nine. I'm disagreeing with you, in your favor, by the way. It says four point three million, it's now up to six point four million. The entire cost of running all of the government in SIO Township last year in twenty twenty two was nine million. That's a whopping increase. Quite frankly, in my ten thousand reports, I have never seen an increase like that, except with high tech startups that were growing at phenomenal rates of growth, talking about a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, a thousand percent a year. I will point out that SIO Township's revenue appears to be more than adequate to meet the township's needs. The average annual rate of increase in revenue for SIO's government affairs includes township administration, fire protection, police protection, but excludes the business activities like water and sewer. For government affairs, over the last fifteen years, is six point three percent. Average annual compounded, that's three times the increase in inflation, three times, three hundred percent of the increase in inflation, the average annual rate of increase. I just want to have one more minute, then I'll finish, and then the folks here, if they want, they can take a copy, and I attach the financial information. Also, SIO Township's net position, which is like the network in the private sector, appears to be more than adequate to support the township's needs to cover contingencies that may arise as of today. The average annual increase in net position for SIO Township's government over the last fifteen years is five point nine percent, which is an increase of two point five times the rate of inflation. So bottom line is, the SIO Board of Trustees has not established any basis, specific basis for the increase in fire safety mileage, and has stated above, putting a proposed increase in November ballot without documented justification, detailed justification, what I believe constitute financial malfeasance. And absent the kind of review that I am used to seeing with the budget increases that is defended, I will vote no. And that, yes, this is a protest also, so you can put me down as a protester. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead and grab it for the board.
I'll just take, I'll take a couple for us. Thank you.
Next speaker for the public hearing, please come forward.
I am here to protest this.
Please take into the microphone.
I am, my name is Faye Sommer. Faye is F A Y, summer is S O M M E R. And I live at forty eight forty Greenway Court in Ann Arbor, which is in SIO Township. And I am here to protest this levy or increase in our taxes for everything this gentleman here said, because I could not have said it better than what he did. I was appalled when I got this email in the, the email on this and how undocumented the whole thing was. And then, just like, you know, vote yes or whatever. I'm not voting yes on something I don't even understand why it's increasing at such a super rate. I mean, just like what he said, it's way over the bounds of what should ever have been put on that piece of paper. So, anyway, other people.
Thank you.
Robert Smoltz, three one one seven East Delhi. I protested based on the proposal that is being voted on on the ballot. I'm all for good fire protection, but I have to understand with the presentation that this gentleman had that, all the ducks are in order. Thank you.
Albert?
Yes.
Could I ask you to spell your last name for me?
S M O L T Z.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is John Stinson. I live at thirty nine thirty North Lionel Road. I came tonight just to learn a little bit, see the presentations. I'm not here to protest, but I do have a question. It's just been kind of bugging me ever since I first read this. I moved in here thirty five years ago to that address. And as you showed in your presentation, the population then was somewhere probably in the eight eighty eight hundred, something like that, and now we're two and a half times that. I assume our tax base, the SEVs on homes have gone up approximately two and a half times, because you need that many more homes. So has the millage for the existing fire department gone way down from where it was, so that the revenue is the same? Because it seems to me, if you doubled the amount of houses, or maybe two and a half times, we should have two and a half times the revenue we used to have per year for the fire department, given the same knowledge. So why don't we have the money in our current budgets to to build a new fire department? If we're both operating with the same efficiency we did twenty years ago? You know, maybe there's some increases in equipment costs that are non inflationary, that are much more, or something like that, but I I just don't understand. I don't think construction has gone up hugely, more than, you know, over the last thirty years, and it hasn't last five years. But, you know, if you could just address that maybe a little bit. Thank you.
I can touch on a couple of them. Some of this well precedes me here. Like I said, I've been here three years. When the department was first founded, it was a paid on call fire department, so the costs were very low. Call volume was very low. As the township's grown and need for services has grown, we've also seen a decrease in the number of paid on call or volunteer firefighters, which has necessitated more full time staffing. So that's part of the component that you might not see. I believe it was about two thousand ten was when the first fire standalone fire millage was actually created. So it's only been about thirteen years that the fire department's had its own millage. The millage you pay today supports the three firefighters we have on duty. The increases to add more firefighters add a second building.
My name is Patrice Johns, and I live at five six seven one Dexter Ann Arbor Road in Dexter. Um, I'm a retired nurse, ICU nurse for many years, and so I had the opportunity to talk to Carl Firth, our previous fire chief. Over the years, many times, we became friends. And he told me that most of our calls were not fire, they were medical. And that's why he had kind of wanted me even to carry a pager and, you know, go to medical calls. So I guess I don't understand why we need more fire engines and a fire stations if most of them are medical calls. And now you're telling me that not only will this rescue van or rescue vehicle go to calls, but they're not for the most serious things, a cardiac arrest, a heart attack, severe trauma from a car accident. If I have a broken bone, I can probably wait ten or fifteen minutes for you to come and take me to the hospital. Where you actually, time is of the essence, is a cardiac arrest and MI or severe trauma from a car accident. So to me, this is way too much money for fire engines unless our fires have gotten a lot more since I've talked to Carl over the years, when he told me that mainly we were dealing with medical calls.
Sure, and I can, I can touch on some of that for you. Percentage of calls were about fifty percent medical, fifty percent fire related. So there's our balance is about fifty fifty. And and our rescue is kind of the intent there is so that we can, as SIO Township, take care of some of the lower acuity calls where we might not have an ambulance available, if they were taking a patient to the hospital, deal with that cardiac arrest or heart attack. And allow HVA to handle those calls. They're, like many other places, are pretty short staffed. And we've, in my time here, I've seen increases in response times, and this is by putting a rescue in SIO Township into the into the mix, it's hopefully going to keep HVA or paramedic provider more available to handle the serious calls. We'll take some of the less serious calls for them. Does that make sense?
Yes, but can't those people wait a few extra minutes? I mean, a broken bone, it's kind of, yeah, they have.
Sure, sure, they can, up to a certain point, you know, and you get to the point where the ambulance was diverted for a cardiac arrest, and then the next ambulance was coming from Chelsea, and it gets diverted to a trauma. And now we're waiting for something coming from Ipsy, you know, there there comes a point in time where we have to say, hey, maybe we step in and help out too. With our rescue, we we waited about forty five minutes for it with a young girl who dislocated her elbow at a gymnastics place before we decided to make the transport ourselves, because we couldn't get an HVA, they got diverted three times to different calls.
But do we need fire trucks for this? Fire engines? This is a big amount of money.
Yep, yep, a fire engine meets that six minute response time to both medical calls, so that heart attack that goes out on SIO Ridge Road somewhere. That person gets CPR, that person gets an AED, and they get it in minutes rather than ten to fifteen. Being in nursing, you know, we know that cardiac arrest patients need treatment in minutes, not tens of minutes, not fifteen minutes, they need it within the first few. Putting that engine there not only provides fire protection, provides redundancies, so if our our Ziv Station is out, it can handle a second call in SIO, and it would respond with all the other emergencies that require multiple units to respond to. I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know, I can get that answered. I can get that answered.
Is this really on?
It really is.
I was back there and could not hear a word anybody said. So it didn't seem like it was on at all. So if I talk a little loud, it's because if anybody has a problem like I have, maybe you'll hear me. My name is Johanna Astilas. And first of all, I want to say that I appreciate the fire department. And you people do a wonderful job, and you deserve all the help you can get. And it's a shame that, that you have to be left wanting. I appreciate the fire department because I live at the four corners where Scioto Church meets with Ann Arbor and I, I don't know, it's two other townships, I guess. And back in, I think it was in ninety-two or something like that, I, we were all in bed in our house, sound asleep. It was three AM, and somebody was pounding at the door. And I almost didn't hear it, but he kept vehemently pounding to the point where it never stopped. And so I got up and went, started to go downstairs and glanced out the window and saw a fire. Our garage was about six feet maybe from the back door of our house. And I couldn't believe it. I screamed at my son. I said, get out of bed! There's a fire! And he ran, jumped past me on the stairs, and I said, like a mother, go back and put on your shoes! Well, the man pounding on the back door when I answered it, by that, well, by that time it was the side door, because he had to get away from the flames. And he said, man, you gotta get out of the house now! And so we did. My son went past me. The car was, or truck we had was near the garage, not in it. And he pulled it away because the fire, the flames are starting to spread over to a workshop we had. Well, we sat in a, in the truck across the street in my neighbor's driveway in the other township. And we were told that a, a fire truck came, but it wasn't Ann Arbor. I mean, it wasn't a Scioto Township. I think it was Ann Arbor. And then before you knew it, there were three more fire companies that came. And I thank God they did, because I didn't want to lose my house, you know? But the thing is that they stopped and put out the fire. And, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate. Ann Arbor was all, not Ann Arbor, but Scioto Township was on another call, and that's why they didn't get there first. But this man, I consider, could have saved our lives because the fire was right at our back door and damaged the back door. It had to be replaced. And so anyways, the, the thing that I came to protest was not the proposal for a new fire station. I proposed the way, the manner of handling it. I mean, to get a letter, I think the, you know, it gave us only days, if not a week or so, to respond to a proposal that had already been clearly thought out ahead of time by the local politicians. And so it's not the fire department I object to. It's the way it has been handled. That it has not been given a fair hearing. I don't recall seeing anything in your Scioto Township newsletters. If you had, I missed it. But my other protest is that, do we have assurances that when you are handling this now, giving us so little time to rush this through an election, which should have been done previously, where you had time to, to warn people, not a last-minute proposal like, like was given us? Do we have assurances that residential properties resulting from speedy growth of building growth, residences like apartment buildings and townhouses or multiple residences, whatever you care to call them, that these apartment buildings and townhouses will pay what is a fair share? How do we know? Are we given assurances that deals weren't made with the, with the builders of these properties or, or the managers of these properties that, that they are paying an equal share for fire services? Are we subsidizing services for them is what I want to know fairly? And I know that we have maybe a little more land around our houses. Hopefully, most of us do. But I want to be assured that those in these apartments pay a fair share and that the promoters of those properties haven't gotten some kind of a cut that makes their property money-wise more attractive. I think that needs to be addressed satisfactorily. And I just, as a resident of longstanding and homeowner, and other homeowners, face increases not only for their new fire station while aging residents with aging homes pay higher rates at a time when their homes require greater investment to bring their properties up to date. Like, my home is going to be a hundred years old and two oh two seven, and you can't begin to imagine the work that needs to be done on it. You know? And replacing and repairing to make residences livable in, in the, the next few years ahead is expensive. And at a time when older people, you know, like myself, am widowed, and I don't have money around the corner, I don't have a job, I want to be sure that I get a fair shake on, you know, consideration. And I know there are beautiful homes in Scioto Township. But there's another thing. Scioto Township, so close to Ann Arbor, has been used as Ann Arbor's housing provider. And I don't think anybody would disagree with that. I have huge double tandem trucks with dirt, God knows what, going in front of my house. Four of them every day, one direction, and then four of them coming back every day to be filled up again. And so it's like non-stop building or transferring of materials because of building. And what I, the only thing I've seen on it is dirt. But it's just, it's mind-boggling to think of the rapid growth in housing in Scioto Township. Does Scioto Township intend to become affiliated or annexed to Ann Arbor in a more permanent manner? I've, I've been told by a friend, I don't know whether it's true or not, that Ann Arbor's taxes are highest, next to the next highest, which would have been the city of Detroit, which is now lowering their taxes, if he knows what he's talking about. And he's a pretty smart guy, so I give him some credit for bringing that to my attention. Are we doing this to become Ann Arbor Two? Or, you know, I mean, I think we need some clarification on these matters for years ahead. And, and you don't have to answer that now, but I want people to think about that. Because God help us if we have to pay full Ann Arbor taxes, which isn't so far from, you know, imagination.
Thank you.
And then at a time when it seems everyone else is working hard, following two years of lockdowns and pair downs in businesses, and at any rate, we're all hurting dollar-wise, those who are not so fortunate. And I'd like to know what consideration is there for our position? That's why we have to look at how the payment for newer facilities is handled. And I mean, how do we know that what you have proposed, even though you've had time to go through it, you don't give us time to go through it? Is it comparative? Are there comparatives? Not from Scioto Township residents. I'm talking about some, like other bigger cities would handle, from bona fide competitors.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. And then aside from that, what I really, lastly propose is to see that this is a time when everyone's working overtime to keep up, that even our Scioto Township officials close in their offices. One closes one day a week. You're now closing two hours early in one department, an hour early in another department. Why are you getting time off at a time when it's supposed to be working like crazy?
Thank you, Johanna.
Thank you for your added time.
The name is Brian Eubels, E Bells, with one L. Five three nine eight Salzburg Court.
Can you speak into the mic?
Sure. Brian Eubels, five three nine eight Salzburg Court. I've been resident there for thirty years, some thirty.
Okay, I hear you.
Thirty, I hear as a resident. I don't know.
Make the microphone.
Does it work?
The mic's working.
Is it working?
The microphone's not working.
Is it working? Is it working? Okay.
So, so I, I just wanted to, I guess I have to protest. So I'm here to, I'm appearing and protesting the special, the special assessment at this meeting. But I have some questions. The, the statistic was given that this year we expect to have sixteen hundred calls to the fire department. I divided that by three hundred and sixty-five and got four point three eight a day. But I drive by and I ride my bike by the fire department. And I always see the trucks there, so I'm having a hard time figuring out what four point three eight a day has to do with, with anything. I, I just don't see it. So that's one of my questions. And, and I think the other question is really what the, the other, the other resident has already brought to attention. And that is, the fire department, I don't think, is intended to be everything to all people. There's an old rule in, in manufacturing that you assign responsibility and you have accountability. If you don't assign responsibility for something, then you don't have accountability for anything. I had a management team actually tell me one time that everybody's responsible for everything. And I said, then no one's accountable for anything, because you aren't measuring anybody on anything. Well, a fire department can't be EMS and a, and a, an ambulance and, and police protection and everything else. Somebody has to take a division responsibility here and say, what is it, what is the fire department for? And we made the point, running fire trucks out to, to an EMS emergency is, is irrelevant, because a fire truck is irrelevant. We don't need it there in the first place. So I think we have a whole issue here about division of responsibility and, and what is, what is the fire department for? Okay? That's one of my points. The other point is, the only SAD I've ever been responsible for was to pave a road. And, and this SAD here seems to go on and on, but the paving of road at termination, you paid for it for ten years, and then you were done. It had a termination. But the SAD we're talking about here doesn't seem to have a termination. Is it just perpetual?
No, it's, it's a ten-year. It's the, may I answer?
Yes.
Um, this started originally as a point nine. In two thousand and nine, was increased to one point three five in two thousand and nineteen. Those were each for ten-year periods. The question that's being asked the voters on November seventh is one ten-year question for the operating and one twenty-year question for the capital question.
So I, so I, I find it dubious. What's going to happen at the end of ten years? If I, if I still want, I'm going to have a facility there, just sitting there with fire trucks in it with no, no people and no, and nothing in there? I mean, I don't get the, I don't get the, I don't get the termination. If I'm building a facility and I'm staffing a fire trucks, I'm staffing a people, that's an ongoing concern. That's not a termination. That's not like I, I build a road and I pay for it over ten years and I'm done. So, so what? I don't get SAD. I don't understand the special assessment district.
Let me give a little background. When we started, when they needed revenue and they had to be funded, we at that time had Dexter as a village within our jurisdiction. So in order to collect the need, we set it up in the process of a SAD so that the outer township, if that's my phrase, we were paying for our department. Dexter was already paying for theirs in their summer levy that they do as a village. And we did that so we did not double charge them for fire protection. It was just a process that we used. And of course, there's legal requirements for a SAD process, which meant every year they have to come and say, this is what we need, and we have to follow the steps and approve, and it's put on a tax bill. That's the only reason that it was a SAD. And it was calculated on your taxable value. It's an unusual situation in a way. But we did not want to double tax the residents and, at that time, the village. Of course, now it's a city and we aren't even part of their tax process. So that's the background as to why.
Thank you very much. I, I find it not, not dishonest, but just kind of not being factual about it. Let's just, let's just say for real, we're increasing our taxes for infinity. I mean, this is there for all years, isn't it? And we're never going to stop anything at ten years, and we're never going to stop anything at twenty years, are we?
For the special, for the public safety special assessment, this mechanism, it's typical, and you're absolutely right. It's typically ongoing.
Right. So why don't we just face up to it and, and, and approach it like that as a, as a township, rather than having this terminology of SAD? I, I find it confusing, okay?
Thank you. So this is under Public Act thirty-three, which is, they're basing the special assessment district. And it's up for vote November seventh. So it's up to the voters to approve this or not. If it fails, it fails. Back to the drawing board. In ten years, it will be in front of the voters again. So it's really up to us if we choose to vote yes or no. So it's not perpetual. Of course, we're always going to need fire service, and we'll have to scramble to figure out a different way. But we could also have a millage. We can put it on the, the ballot for a millage, but with the millage, then we're subject to the heavily rollback, which that means less money for the, the fire department. But, yeah, as far as, so, so Public Act thirty-three is a different because it is a special assessment. And you've been through the road process for a special assessment. That's under Public Act one eighty-eight. It's different because, like you said, once the improvement is finished and paid off, then you're done until you need it improved again. But so this, this is, has a timeframe for ten years, at least this plan that they have created. I hope that. And, and the other thing is, since it is based on the taxable value, it is sort of like a millage where it is a tax deduction, if you are able to do that. But with a regular special assessment, you can't.
I, I just think it'd be more honest to say, hey, we want another fire department, another fire building. We want to put equipment in it. And I think you need to justify that on the basis of fires, not on cats and trees, okay? To childhood, childhood book. I mean, that, I'm not, I'm not, I don't need a new building and a new fire truck for cats and trees. So I'm, I think the other resident made that statement very well, also made the same point. Let's, let's have division of labor here. Let's figure out who does what. and let's make it their responsibility, and then they can be held accountable for it, okay? And if we don't do that, everybody's responsible for everything, well then, nobody's accountable for anything, it doesn't make any sense. And I think that's the problem now, we have, fire department's doing fourteen things, and they probably ought to be just fighting fires. And I think that's what I'm willing to pay for, and I think everybody's willing to pay for fire protection, but not when it's mashed in with cats and trees and everything else, and four point three eight calls a day. I, I can't, I don't, I don't know where those calls are, but I swear, the trucks are always sitting there. So I don't understand what four point three eight calls a day is. So I'm, I'm just mystified by this whole thing, it just doesn't make any sense. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ryan.
Bill, Bill Zhu, Z H U, is the last name, five six ten Gallery Park. I have two questions. One is, on the, on your presentation, the cost difference is like seventy dollars per year, something like, that's just the first year, right? And as you go on, you push a couple hundred dollars for that example, I think assessed value was two hundred thousand. And if you have a little nicer house, it'd be a thousand dollar year, toward, toward, and like year seven, eight. Right, so that's not small amount, like seventy dollars. A lot of people don't do good with math, and they, they don't realize it's, you know, a couple hundred dollars or these, you know, could be more, right? That's one. Two is, you know, now we know the cost, what are the benefits, right? The only thing I see in your presentation is the response time, you get your response time goal of six minutes or less, but I, I actually read there's moving away from response time as a measurement for first responders. I mean, that's, okay, that's different, that's for police actually. Their, their measurement goal is actually moving away from response time versus more. But what are the actual benefits like? We have, you know, saves our lives, I mean, or, so, once we have these kind of data, it'd be easier for us to, to send, and the other thing is, have you considered alternatives like adding a van in your existing facility? Will that lower your, you know, response time a little bit instead of spending a lot of building, a new building? You know, a, a, and then the other gentleman was correct, it's, it's a perpetual, because your costs, your operating costs is the majority of this cost, and your, your millage will be closer to street, you know, all the timeframe, that's hundreds and hundreds of dollars per, per, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
My name is Chuck Rutt, fifty-three fifteen Hickory Nut Lane, which is a private road, and I get nothing from the township or the county other than fire protection if I need it. Also, this new proposed site is looking out, the front where the sign is looking out, is at City of Ann Arbor. Why are you going to put it on a, on a line of Scioto Township? Why don't you move it back two miles? You know? Because if you go out the door, across the street is going to be City of Ann Arbor. So, you know, you, you say you're moving down there because there's more people down there, well, there's more people back this way. There's more people at Baker Road and out that way, there's building all kinds of houses and stuff out there. So, you know, why, why are we building a fire station overlooking a gravel pit in City of Ann Arbor? And another thing you said, you get no response time from the City of Ann Arbor for water. They don't have a water truck, they have hydrants. So, okay, that's it.
Yeah, but, so, so ideally, I think a fire station would be better located
Right.
on Jackson, near Wagner, but there's no property available.
Well, Jackson and Wagner is also the city of the Township Line.
The Township Line with the City of Ann Arbor is on the opposite side of Wagner, further north. I think it's a little confusing, because Ann Arbor sort of juts out, because that area was annexed, because of the Gellman contamination years ago. But the area directly across from where the proposed second fire station is actually one of the most densely populated parts of Scioto Township, all the way to the highway.
At Scioto Township where?
So on the other side of that gravel pit is, is one of the most densely populated residential areas of Scioto Township.
All the way to Maple.
Maple and ninety, yeah.
Scioto Church and Maple.
It looks, it looks like Ann Arbor, but it's Scioto Township.
I used to be electrical inspector for the City of Ann Arbor, and I did inspections for Washtenaw, or, for City of Ann Arbor, this side of the expressway.
There is a portion of Ann Arbor that is on this side of, of the highway, that area around.
Where all those houses are, yeah.
Well, where all those houses are, around Liberty Racket Club, that's all Scioto Township.
Could you show it on the map?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Chief Hood, do you have that? You showed something earlier.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, chief, could you pull up one of your slides, maybe? Okay, that was for Mr. Drew. He's going to pull it up.
Okay, I just thought I'd put this forward, and people could use this to,
Yeah.
This is, this is the area that, that is Ann Arbor, that comes right up to Wagner Road here. But this area down here is all Scioto Township, and that's very densely populated. This is where the fire station was proposed, right here.
This map might help also. Here's where kind of Ann Arbor juts out into what used to be Scioto. And in this area here, it gets a little dicey, because there's some houses that are and some that aren't. But essentially, this, this is the area we're speaking of, the densely populated area of supervisors.
The part is distant from the other corner of Scioto, right? This more?
Yes.
Close south. East corner of Scioto and, and south all the way to Scioto, where it's on the other side.
Still have a fire station here.
Oh, that one will still be there, correct, I didn't understand that, thank you.
Please, if you're here to speak, come on up.
Yeah, I'm Robert McKinley at six one zero zero Dexter Ann Arbor Road. I want to protest and the assessment. And when I got the letter in mail, three point seven five mills with an extra point zero seven, zero point seven five, I thought that was huge, appalling. And especially having recently purchased in Scioto Township. The SEV gets, you know, a new set, new setting going. Which I'm sure the last couple of years with the real estate windfall that's been going, probably a lot of added revenue. I'm sure I'm paying probably double the taxes of previous owner, something like that. And combine that with the added population, or the, the number of businesses and houses, that's got to be huge amounts of revenue. Where's all that money? Why a new assessment? I don't get it. There's got to be a ton of real estate SEV money available for a new fire station and maintenance of the existing fire station. Why a new assessment and higher taxes and a rate for everybody here? So, that's it. You got my name.
Thank you very much, Robert.
I'm going to walk around, I'm not going to stand here. David Reed, Scioto Township resident, also the chair of the Fire Services Committee. I'm going to address these folks, because you know everything I'm going to say. We all are paying the price of twenty plus years of mismanagement for the fire department. For many, many years, I urged the prior, two prior chiefs, Chief Furch, to come to the board with a budget, asking him, asking the board, because I was on the board at the time. I said, come to the board and tell us what you need. Because he had outdated equipment, outdated turnout gear, the trucks were needing constant repair. But he told, he told me, no, I can't do it, because I've been told I can't raise, I can't ask for any more money. So for years, the fire department was, there's an expression, I don't know where it came from, and forgive me if I'm an interviewer redhead, but the fire department was the redheaded stepchild. It was the last thing that the board thought about. That changed with, when Chief, was it Ichesko, is that his name?
Yeah.
He was our substitute or our temporary fire chief before we got Chief Hood. And then since the Chief Ichesko started to make changes, and now Chief Hood has made some dramatic changes in the, in the fire department, and has added some accountability and some, he's just brought the, the fire department up into the twenty-first century. We were still operating way back in the nineteen eighties, but he brought it up to the twenty-first century. So we're, we're paying now for that mismanagement. The, when I was on the board, we, when, we changed the, we realized we needed more money. It was point nine. Our manager at the time, Bryce, I'm sure you all remember Bryce, came to us and said, we need between one point seven five and one point nine to upgrade the building and to hire the firefighters that we need. And the board, in its infinite wisdom, said, well, we'll never get one point nine passed, we probably won't even get one seven five passed, so we'll have to do just the bare minimum one three five. And in fact, it was just a bare minimum, although it did pass, I think it was seventy percent?
Yes.
Seventy percent, yeah. So it was, it was a very successful thing, but it wasn't, still wasn't enough, because we still have only three full-time firefighters on staff at any one time. And in order to, to fight a fire safely, the chief didn't mention this, we need four. Because we need four, because you have to have two outside the building and two inside the building, to fight a fire effectively and safely, according to the regulations. So we only have three guaranteed, now we sometimes have four, but we only have three guaranteed. So one of the things that we need to do is hire at least the three more firefighters, which will give us one more on each day shift, because these guys work one day and they have two days off. So there's three shifts of four guys, so we need twelve firefighters to adequately staff the building. And someone asked, can't we just add more people to this building? The building we have now, maximum people that can live in that building is four. There's no room to add another bed or another facility for the, for someone to sleep. So most we can have there is four. So in order to hire, hire more firefighters, we need a second, not only do we need a second building to cover the, the area in the south more effectively, but also to hire more firefighters. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name in the yellow shirt.
Johanna.
I'm sorry?
Brian.
Brian. You were talking about, we should just stick to fighting fires. Well, you have to realize, the name of the fire department is Fire and Rescue. So anytime there's a car accident, these guys go. Anytime there's a heart attack, these guys go. Because they're the first, they're the first ones to be called. They're the, they're called when there's a power line down, because DTE will take days to get there. They get there and they block the street and they put out the cones and they keep, and they keep the traffic moving so people don't step on it. They're the first call on nearly everything in the township. Well, chief, when was the last time you got a cat out of a tree? I know you were using that euphemically, but they don't go to cats on trees. For years, we were a, a level two, there are four levels, four levels of response, right?
There used to be, yes.
Used to be, and we were, level four goes to everything. Broken limb, a cat in a tree, level one only goes to fire and maybe a heart attack. So I think we were level two, and I think we're now level three, well, as, according to the old rating.
Essentially.
Yeah, okay, so we go to more than we used, so that's one reason why the calls go up to, what, sixteen hundred you said? And I'm going to take a little more time as some of our other responders. And, Jared, no, I'm sorry. I live with earshot of the fire station, and I can attest, I'm surprised you only, the average is only four a day, because I, I hear the sirens three, four, five times during the daytime, not, and I don't count them at night, I'm sure they go out at night too. So the increase in calls is, is, is directly proportional to the increase in population, obviously. And look around you in this room, look around. I don't think I see anybody in this room except for, except for you, under forty. We're all over fifty, maybe over sixty, I'm over seventy. This is an aging population, and this township has to recognize the fact that we're going to have heart attacks, we're going to have problems, we're going to have people who fall and they can't get up. Firemen are called for them, it's fire and rescue, not just fire. And one more thing, Mr. Boyle. I need you, I need, we need to hook Mr. Boyle up with Mr. Perry, Mark Perry. Mark was on the, Mark Perry was on the Fire Services Board, and he put together an Excel spreadsheet, you know, I thought I, I thought I knew Excel, I thought I was good at Excel. But Mark's Excel spreadsheet is, is so detailed and so deep, and covers every single possible cost, furniture, beds, sheets, water bills, electric bills, it covers everything for the next ten years, and that's what we're basing these costs on, is the information that Mark put together for that. And I think he sent it to the board, and I think we really need to make that spreadsheet available. I don't, and I'm not degrading anybody in this room, but I had a hard time understanding it. I would be surprised, no offense. I would be difficult for any, anybody who's never used Excel would be difficult to understand it. I think, but I think with your background, I think you'd be able to understand it. And I think you'd get a lot of your answers from that sheet, and I, and you might understand where the numbers are coming from. So, I think that's all I have to say, but I'm not here to protest, I'm here to support.
Chief? Just one comment. Mr. Reed spoke of two in, two out. That's the initial number of firefighters necessary to go into a burning building. That's not the total number needed on scene.
Oh, no, no.
We get to a significant fire in a area with fire hydrants, we need seventeen to twenty. And an area that doesn't have fire hydrants, probably twenty to twenty-five.
And ten for motorcycle or car accident?
Yeah, seven to ten for car accident, yes.
And how many car accidents?
My printer was not doing well, so this is for you all to pass around, and those of you can keep, repeat this if you'd like, it's on the website of Scioto Township Fire Department. And this was done by Chief Furch in twenty eighteen, and the board hasn't done anything with it other than have it on the website. Take one, and yeah, sit down. And chief, I gave them your, your direct email address, my colleagues. For those of you on Zoom, this is the document that I handed out, and it is on the fire station website. How many of you residents routinely attend the Board of Trustees meetings twice a month and the Planning Commission meetings twice a month? Thank you, Linda. My name is Pam Boyd, a well-informed and active Scioto resident, Scioto community newsletter. Let's talk bread and butter fire station emergencies. But first, what is the current standard for staffing a fire state, fire team in Michigan? Per the National Fire Protection Association Staffing Standards, fifteen hundred and OSHA, MYOSHA standards, the standard is set for at least four firefighters. Two firefighters are to be inside and two Two firefighters are to be inside and two firefighters outside in standby mode, like Chief, Chief just said. Scio's current fire teams are two to three firefighters, meaning we are short-staffed under current standards. Further, when the fire team has gone out on a call, the fire station is left unmanned, it's empty. I live just off Azeeve Road before the highway. The fire station is a busy place. So when it's left unmanned, it's empty. A second fire station would be an immediate backup located within our own township. Let's look at the number of firefighters needed to efficiently handle some typical emergency calls. Note, for all of these calls, Scio Cannon does call in other fire departments. However, there are times where all of the, the close fire departments are on calls of their own and the closest help is 20 minutes away. Call one, a fire, a car fire, seven firefighters are needed, four more than are currently on staff at any given moment. Equipment needed, two engines with one firefighter designated in charge. Call two, a house fire. If it's a small house fire, 17 firefighters are needed. If it's a large house fire, 24 to 30 firefighters are needed, five engines and a ladder truck. If there is no municipal water, then add in several water tankers. A recent example of loss of property in, in the house fire on West U Way in Scio Township earlier, sometime the last year. The Ann Arbor Fire Department ladder truck arrived too late. Another, for those of you who are aware of the house fire on Maple Road located in the outskirts of the city of Ann Arbor earlier this summer, it is estimated that 90% of Washtenaw County's full-time firefighters were on the scene. Call three, a car accident. Two engines with firefighters, a battalion chief, a rescue crew, Huron Valley ambulance. And you all know, we straddle two highways. During a recent ice storm, there was little backup to be found from other fire stations as each fire station was in the same predicament with multiple spinouts and car crashes leaving stations across Washtenaw County, having to rely on their own staff to manage the emergencies. With our own second fire station, we would be in a much better, we'd be much better prepared for those types of calls. With the most recent power storm and power outage, how many of you lost power? Yeah. Our fire station was on 25 calls that first day. Call number four, cardiac arrest, nine firefighters. I'm going to think of, why do you need nine? Nine are optimal due to the need to switch out firefighters doing compression every two minutes. That's a hard task and you've got to focus and you've got to be there and you've got to be there. The compression every two minutes, among other tasks that need to be accomplished very quickly. Scio Township should stop being in the position of being one, three, seven firefighters short, not to mention short on equipment. Being short-staffed is a health and safety risk. The risk is not only the resident who needs help, but also the firefighters who need to do the work of four firefighters when there are only two. For well over 10 years, previous Scio boards have underestimated the needs and safety requirements of our firefighters. Our fire station has been perpetually understaffed and under-equipped for years. Now residents are in the position to have to play catch-up to bring our fire department back up to basic standards for the size of our township. And we are growing with developments of large residential properties at, on Jackson at Baker and Baker at I-94 putting further demands on our fire department. I realize that residents have justifiable lack of faith in previous boards, as well as some on the current board. You will get no argument from me on that. I am one of the few Scio residents who regularly attends township meetings and actively participates in an effort to bring our township into the current century. One member of this township that I do trust and have faith in to do what is right with our fire fund money is Chief Hood. I've attended most all of the fire service guidance committee meetings. I've scheduled meetings with the chief and a few of the firefighters. I've asked their needs. I've heard their concerns. I've heard their stories. I've even asked them why they stay in this fire department. This fire SAD ask is not money for wants. This SAD is about funding needs. It's about funding safety for every single Scio Township resident and Scio Township firefighter. Thank you.
I'm Jim Walter. I'm also going to protest the special tax levy. The, the problem that we ultimately have, I'm sorry, I addressed 1096 Coventry Square Drive, Ann Arbor, Michigan. The problem that I, that we ultimately have with it is that we're simply not convinced that it's not going to allow the township to spend other tax revenue frivolously. Yeah, we, we completely understand that the fire department needs more money. But you know what, lower our other taxes to offset it. And I, and I also want to talk about a statistic that you included in the briefing. You, you mentioned the increased population as some justification as to why you need additional revenue. The problem is, is that you only gave half of the statistic. You did, you did not include the increased revenue that you've got with that increase in population. And without both of those numbers, we have no way of knowing why you need additional money based on additional population. So if you're going to give a statistic, you need to give them all. And the third thing as to why we're protesting it is pretty much because we're irritated homeowners with the township. Earlier this year, we tried doing a renovation to our home. R1A residential zoning. And when we went to do that, that remodel, we ended up finding out that, oh, we have a 50-foot rear yard setback. We requested a, to be able to encroach by 10 feet and we were denied. So if you guys are so flush with cash that you can deny us the opportunity to improve our homes, improve our property values, can you imagine how we felt when we saw this letter come in the mail saying that you want to increase our taxes with this special levy? To me, that is unacceptable. If you need increased revenue, then let us actually make improvements to our homes, to our properties. You know, one of the reasons that you guys can basically deny variances is, sole purpose is to increase property values? So what? You really don't need the increase, increase of revenue to that. If you're going to deny us those opportunities. And you know, what makes it even worse is the fact that not a single one of our neighbors protested it and our property abuts parkland owned by our own subdivision. No one would be able to see it, no one would have been impacted by it. And yet the township has no issues denying homeowners the opportunity to improve their own. So why should the residents agree to the same reason levy? You guys clearly have enough cash. So that's actually all I have.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening. My name is Abe Altheb, my new resident of, of the township. Couple questions. How, how, have we done comparison to similar townships around the area? Like, did we look at Pittsfield Township? What's their, what's their mileage rate? Ann Arbor Township, where are we comparable to them? You know, I mean, if I look at the population, our township were less than a third of Pittsfield Township's population. Do you have some statistics to share about the mileage in those townships and how do we compare in terms of population?
Absolutely. I, I can, I've got a couple documents I could give you to articulate that.
I will, I will send you an email.
And would you be so kind to spell your last name for me?
Sure. Altheb, A-L-T-H-E-E-B, 5947 Redstone Court.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim Adams, 7015 Marshall Road, Dexter. Been a Scio resident since 1985. I remember the 1988 split when Scio split from the Dexter Fire Department. Wasn't happy about it then, wasn't really amused about it now. I was a firefighter in Dexter for seven years and 22 more in Ann Arbor. Retired eight years ago as, five years ago as a lieutenant. I would like to thank Pam for putting this together. That is dead nuts accurate. It also shows that the need has been a lot longer than people think. Because this list doesn't really matter if you're in Ann Arbor, Scio Township, Ho Dunk, I don't care, Shelby, Michigan, or wherever. It has to do with what it takes to actually put something out fire-wise. What she wrote down here is right out of the NFPA standards. Fire departments are bound to a great degree by the NFPA standards, whether you adopt them or not, because if you don't, something tragic happens. There goes your defense. Nice to be, anyway. The mutual aid unbalance that the chief mentioned is absolutely true. In my career in Ann Arbor and prior to that in Dexter, we assisted Scio Township countless times. Very infrequently needed to have them back because Ann Arbor was better staffed at one time than they are now. Ann Arbor has also played a staffing game. When I got hired there, I was the 126th firefighter on staff at that point in time. There were six fire stations, there were four trucks operating out of downtown Ann Arbor Fire Station number one. When I left, there were 82 firefighters. That was not due to attrition, that was due to staffing cuts. And they were operating out of four and a half fire stations because downtown Ann Arbor currently only runs one truck. Problem is, similar to Scio, if your one truck is committed to something else, it's not available for anything else and automatic backup is non-existent. The other problem with that is that the two-in-two-out rule is crap. In the fact that two people going in aren't going to be able to do any actual work. At the most, they can do something for about 15 minutes if they're actually working, 10 if they're working hard. If they're standing around watching, they can get a good half an hour out of it, but you're not going to accomplish anything. If it's your house on fire, you want the maximum number of bodies there as fast as possible. You want the greatest amount of water. 500 gallons sounds like an awful lot in a fish tank. But out of the deck gun on a fire truck, that's about 17 seconds gone. Out of a hand line, which is the smallest attack line, small inch and a half diameter that you go in the front door with, it's about a minute and a half. So if you don't have substantial water coming from your own department, you are waiting for some other department to get there. And that is a huge assumption that they aren't on some other call, which happened multiple times in Scio Township. Called for Ann Arbor, called for Ann Arbor Township, called to Dexter, all the way to Celine. And three out of four of those weren't available all at the same time. Remarkable as it sounds, it happened. My question and concern about this is that for a very long time, you can go back to like 1988, for, in fact, the Scio Township Fire Department's culture was wrong. I have videos, I have calls I was actually mutual aided to where the Scio firefighters were told to basically stand around outside and watch. Or circle the building and come back and tell our little huddle of bodies what you found. Not get your ass in the front door and put that out. Standing around on the outside and fighting a fire is not going to accomplish anything except put the house, structure, barn, car collectors barn, House and Michael Drive, I can keep going, I got 15 of them right off the top of my head. They put them in the basement. My insurance company would rather not shovel my house out of my basement, especially when I'm paying for a fire department. So it's a cultural thing. I'm confident in the current chief that he's working to change the culture. Because prior to his arrival, the previous chiefs went as far as to, and I was at this call on Robinwood, lock the firefighters out of the house in a front door. It was barely smoke showing and Ann Arbor had two trucks there and we were ready to go inside and put it out to step out of the way. He locked the door. That's bad culture. Right next door to our house, I was on duty in Ann Arbor downtown, so I didn't come. Right next to our house was the rambling office building on 15 acres currently for sale with a new large building. Started fire in a back end, it's the south end of the building in a bathroom where a plumber was soldering a pipe. Something about torches, full dry wood. And when they called, it was immediately Scio responded and did their wander around with not enough people till other people got there. When Ann Arbor Township, Dexter and Celine showed up, they still weren't doing a whole lot. And that building burned end to end, top to bottom. And my wife was standing next door in a bit of a panic at first because the original call came in that said that countywide that my house was on fire. And so that caused a little consternation. But I, my problem with this whole idea is if you need it, justify it. I think they've done a fine job of that over the last 30 years. If I was south and into the not very well-served by response time area, I'd be pissed. Because I'm paying the same tax rate as those people are down there. For the Scio Fire Department to get to my house, they go down here, turn left and marshal it there at my house in no time. If I was south of where the patrol's fire station is and had to wait forever for somebody to get there and I, I'm paying the same tax rate, I would not be happy with that at all. So you justified it, you budgeted it. I can't disagree with the people as to the method to go after the money. But what I can say is, if I'm paying for it, make it worth my money. If my house is on fire, show up and put the thing out in the door, pull the ceiling, knock the walls down, but put water on it. Circling my house three or four times that I've witnessed Scio do, ain't going to work. And there is a long 20-year period where other surrounding departments were very reluctant to call Scio because they knew what lack of service they would actually get from them. So hopefully the chief will fix it. The presentation was a good one, but I can't disagree with the people on the method to go get it.
Everybody, Lawrence Murdy, 1222 Shady Oaks Tribe. From what I just heard, it sounds like even this proposal isn't going to give us what we need. So it sounds like what we need is some, the various agent areas, fire departments to get together and provide service to the area and whole and not this, these micro fire departments that can't meet the needs of their 36 square miles. Anyway, let me, I got one request of the board and that's, we, we've come out tonight with, and you've not given us, it's obvious between this and the last you haven't done a very good job of giving us the information that we think you should have asked and had before getting to tonight. I'd like to hear from each one of you before we close tonight, how you support this and the information, with the information that you have and have been given, that you can support. I'm going to be dropping off my tax bill when I walk out the door tonight. In another couple of years, that's going to go up by over $1,000 a year. And I, I just don't, you haven't, you haven't demonstrated to me yet that it's, that it's going to be money that's, that is money well spent. So at this point, I'm a no, I'm not supporting, I support the fire department, but I'm going to be a no on the, on the milage and the plan. There's a couple of reasons and I think it's okay to say no at this point. One is the, I, I don't think the committee and the board have done their job, I just said that. And I just learned that the township received about $1.9 million in American Rescue, or American Rescue Plan funds for that effort, 1.9. I understand $100,000 went to an emergency truck, is that true? Rescue Plan funds for that effort, 1.9. I understand a hundred thousand dollars went to an emergency truck. Is that true?
250,000 to the new, the rescue. That was one year ago.
It was what, how much?
250,000.
So we have another 1.6 million left.
No, there's been another roughly million allocated to roads.
And that I'm going to talk about. We've got a million nine that the township took in. And from that million nine, we're getting a truck. That's awesome. But the other 1.6 million is going to take care of gravel roads that we've already spent 10 years on an SAD paying for. We've spent, it's going to go towards paying for sidewalks, which we pay a pathway millage. It's the sidewalks up in the uplands and SIO Ridge. That's awesome. But we have a pathway millage that's, that perhaps could be tapped for that. Put the 1.5 million left over into something that benefits everybody. And you know, maybe you can go and revisit that because that really. Anyway, you know, that's, so a couple of other things. It's okay to say no because there's not really been, yeah, there's not, not really a you haven't demonstrated the need. There's, you break down the 1600, 1500 calls that were made, those weren't somewhere in the chief, you say that you can't break those down into our emergency versus not emergency. Well, I think you should spend man hours to get that data, put it out here, tell us exactly what those calls were. And then we can, then we can be more informed as to whether our money should be going to buy building a new fire station. If it's 90% medical, some people have already talked about that. Let's put it towards medical, but if, if, you know, four calls a day and they're not and how many of those four calls are out on the highway? Which we're paying for and not, I don't know that we're getting anything back for it to like, like I said last time. Chelsea area fire department charges for their calls to I-94. Have we considered that yet? And are we doing that?
Not yet.
Not yet. So there's money coming in because you'll be doing that. You'll be moving that. And what I really like to know, if, if in business, I think I'm not a sit around, I don't sit around board table, but I think in business, you'd want to ask what would spending this kind of money, what would be the result? To change in the outcomes. The fires that we talked about over here, the Robinwood, west of you. What would have been the real difference in the outcome of those fires had we had a second station? Would it have been any different in Robinwood? Would it have been, you know, so we need an answer to those. Tell us what the result will be when we're going to be spending at each of us another thousand dollars a year. Again, if, if you save it, there would be no, you know, the loss, I don't know what the percentage, you know, the reduction in loss would when it would support us, you know, this kind of a proposal. What we should see, but anyway, I'd like to see that. And the mutual aid. I understand that there was, chief, you put in a blurb, you, you talked to the city of Ann Arbor Fire Chief and they don't really have the bandwidth, I guess, to further cooperate or something. Well, respectfully, I think it's CEO should be talking to the CEO and not a fire chief to a fire chief on this issue. The board of SIO Township would be talking to this city council of the city of Ann Arbor. And if city of Ann Arbor says, yeah, we want to provide some sort of an aid to SIO Township, you know, maybe for, I don't know, per call, some workout, some business type of arrangement. This tire chief of Ann Arbor is going to do whatever the city council tells him to do. So I think it's a board issue that these that take and tackle this area wide. Talk to Chelsea, talk to Celine. And by the way, here's a question. So the thing of Celine, who, how, who responds to a call of SIO Church Road? And Wagner Road in Lodi Township. And how far is their fire department from that point? It's a long way. City was in the city.
Yeah, probably.
So.
Five or so miles.
My point is the Celine area has their single sole fire station is downtown Celine. So who's going to be responding to the north side of Lodi Township? When a fire comes in, it's going to be our fire station on Wagner Road. That's still reasonable, isn't it?
If we, if we work out a mutually agreement, yes.
It's pretty reasonable. So maybe we could work something out with the city of Celine and their fire department to handle SIO Ridge, Gatlin, that southeast project. Lastly, it's okay to say no because I don't think I haven't seen how this plan is going to be managed adequately. We've just come off this 10 year SAD. And that wasn't managed very well. It was actually pretty poor. The documentation and the whole, the whole rollout and, and now we're throwing another million dollars of American Rescue money towards that to fix things. That didn't get taken care of in the, in Rose SAD. So how is this going to be any different? I just, just tell me how you're going to do. How you're going to do this? And do we have the personnel to actually manage a project of this size? So thanks for your time again. Sorry for rambling. Good night, everybody.
Please excuse my dress. I came from work. I've been wearing a hard hat all day. I'm Linda Smith, 4144 West Liberty Road, SIO Township resident for 44 years. I own six businesses in this township, 10 houses. We're going to pay a lot of money for this, but I support it. If we want good quality fire support in SIO Township, we have to be able to pay for it. It's going to be a stretch for all of us, but we have to show up with the funds. We are playing catch up. And if you had been here for the SIO Township Board meetings or the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, you would hear the reports that are given. There was a large report and study done in 2022 for the fire needs inside of township, just coming off of COVID. Chief has been here for three years. And he's trying to play catch up as well. There wasn't much that you could do for two years inside of township financially. But now we have an opportunity to catch up. There is some fiscal questions about how this money will be spent. I encourage you and turn the tables, ask you to show up at SIO Township meetings, pay attention to the SIO Township budget. Write letters to the board of trustees. They respond. They do pay attention. But you have to watch the videos. You don't even have to come to the meetings. You can see this YouTube any time of day. It's recorded and it's available on the SIO Township website. We need the citizens to show up. We need the citizens to participate to help SIO Township Board do a better job. It's important that we all do show up. I support this and I support the chief. We need to pay good money for good people in SIO Township. And I'll put a shout out for the utility department. We're about to lose our utility director, retiring. And we are short staffed in the utility department. Same story, more people, same amount or less in group of employees than we had 10 years ago in that department. We have short staff at SIO Township itself in the administrative wing. We need more help in SIO Township. We need more budget to pay for that help. And it costs money to run a township correctly. If we don't pay the people that we have, they won't stay. We need quality people to do a quality job to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Who's next to speak during the public hearing? So anyone participating remotely would like to speak during the public hearing?
Yes. First person remotely to speak is Jonathan, followed by Jeffrey Meek. Jonathan, go ahead. Okay, you can come back. Jeffrey Meek, do you want to go ahead and speak? Rob Pattinson? Jeffrey?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay, my name's Jeffrey Meek. And I'm one of the members in Zebra Partners LLC. And we own a, a building at 160 South Zebra Road. We have a massage lux tenant that has a salon. And then we also have a Leo's Coney Island. And anyway, we, we opened up the building during the COVID crisis. And our tenants have been struggling because, because of the COVID situation. It caused them to get off to a slow start. And I see that this proposal, it takes a millage rate from 1.5 all the way up as I see it to 4.5. Is that correct? That would add, our tenants pay, they pay the taxes through their, the CAM provisions and their leases. And they've been struggling. We already paid $54,000 a year in property taxes for the building. And this looks like it would add another 4,500 on top of that. And it just, all at once, it just seems like raising it from 1.35 to 4.5, which I realize it phases in, it looks like under your graph. But I don't see where, you know, that is chiseled in stone. It sounds to me like there's like discretion for the board to raise the taxes up, up, up to 4.5. And that would be an increase of 3.33 times. And I just have to tell you, I I just think it's, it's a big increase to, to more than triple it. And I know that my, my tenants have been struggling. So I just asked that you keep that in mind. And I was also wondering on the new, on the new building proposal. Is the board going to float bonds on that? Or is this going to be paid out of cash? And if, if it's going to be bonds, do you really need that much millage? So those are my questions and you know, these are just comments. I'm, I'm, I'm not here really to protest it, but just to comment and question. And, and I want the, my tenants' voices to be heard because they, they have been concerned about the tax burden that we're, that we're carrying on the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And I will get to everybody who's got it figured out now, but next person will be Kathleen Brand. Go ahead, Kathleen.
Hi, this is Kathleen Brand. I am a SIO resident in the northeast corner of the township. I want to echo what a, a number of people have been saying regarding awareness of governance in SIO Township. I have been actively going to literally all board meetings for the past two years. I've been very concerned about how this township manages their finances. It's been recognized that we haven't had a finance director for, it will be two years in November that we have not had a finance director. So I would have all of the same concerns on how this program would be, would be managed. In fact, I have, I have a lot of concerns about how this board it actually is getting better because we had three board members who resigned. But how they prioritize what projects would be funded in SIO Township. I'll give you a good example. Mr. Hathaway went to to our representative and asked for money out of the state budget. They had money available. And he got 1.5 million dollars. Half of that was to increase, widen the crossing over I-94. The other half was to do additional work on Zebra Road. Now, this is on top of what we've already, we are already paying through our parks pathways preserves millage. He went out and got that 1.5 million dollars. I think that money should have gone to infrastructure in a different way. So I think there is mismanagement. I've been so concerned that I formed a group of people called SIO. SIO Township, SIO residents, fiscally concerned residents to try to hold this board accountable for decision making. So I'm trying, actively trying to point out where costs can be saved, how it can be spent differently. Where we are spending too much money in one area, not recovering costs in the planning area, for example. And I'm very interested in how that whole process works. What I would like folks to do is if you please join us to hold the board accountable. But you have to be informed. There's another election coming up in November 2024. I would encourage people, for example, Mr. Boyer, please run for trustee. If you are interested in how this township spends money, then you got to get a seat at the table. I've been trying to get a seat at the table to point out things. I look closely at the budgets. I fully support this millage. Because I've seen evidence of the fire department not being adequately funded in the past. And I have personally seen what the chief is doing to make things better. Including new inspection program. I think he's on the right track. I think the analysis has been done because I attended all of those fire guidance meetings. You haven't seen the analysis potentially, but I do fully support this and I ask my fellow residents to please join us in keeping this board accountable. Thanks very much.
Rob Pattinson, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, SIO Township. First of all, Christie, thank you for the excellent process following the speaker. That was very well done as usual. Thank you for that. One speaker earlier tonight talked about the, the 1.35 being available to spend to other projects or other departments. And I think it's important that residents understand that the current 1.35 goes to zero. It is replaced by this proposed SAD. John Boyle, you asked, where is the analysis? And I can tell you two things. First of all, I highly suggest watching the videos on YouTube of the SIO Township Fire Services Guidance Committee. And they spent months on that, on this project and it was a very good group of people. And I also, as David Reed suggested, I strongly encourage you to speak to Mark Perry, who was brilliant in his ability to provide the financial analysis for this committee. So I support the fire SAD. For decades, our firefighters have been treated as second class citizens. Jack Knowles asked for an estimate of what it would take to run the fire department in 2019. And then he gutted it and put a millage before the voters that wasn't enough to run the fire department. That 1.35 should have been, I believe it was 1.65 or maybe it was 1.95. Ryan or David Reed, you can correct that. And 1.35 wasn't enough to run it. And so for the last four years, our fire department has been underfunded and running in a, in debt because the right thing wasn't done at the time for the 2019 SAD. We are now paying for decades of neglect as a result. Chiefhood, I admire and respect you and believe in you and your professionalism. Please explain again to the residents that this SAD replaces the old one. That the old millage goes to zero and is replaced by the new millage. Also, please explain again that this SAD is not a huge millage all at once. That this millage very slowly increases based on a yearly review of the fire department budget and staffing needs. Please also explain how insurance for some residents will go down because of the location of the new fire station and that will offset the increase. You did much of that in your, in your presentation, your excellent presentation. But those points need in your presentation, your excellent presentation, but those points need to be very highly emphasized. In twenty eighteen, SIO Township paid for an independent study to evaluate the needs of SIO Township. That was five years ago, and it basically says the same thing our Fire Services Guidance Committee did. We need to catch up our fire department to reasonable standards. I will again say I find it unforgivable, but every time we send our firefighters out to respond to emergencies, we do so and safely. At the last meeting, someone asked, how often is it necessary to have four firefighters on scene? Unfortunately, our firefighters can't jump forward in time and find out what is needed and then jump back in time and respond. That kind of Monday morning quarterbacking doesn't understand the issue. The point is, when an emergency is called in, there is no knowing what is required. If it's not a huge emergency, great. But if it is, we need our firefighters safe. Two in and two out is the industry standard. We owe it to the people who risked their lives for us to do so as safely as possible. One of the protest letters wrote that they believe SIO Township didn't explore or discuss details and data enough. I can assure residents of SIO Township that is not true. The Fire Services Guidance Committee spent months poring over the needs and options in great detail and with a lot of data. It was made up of people with widely varied views and experiences. I have a lot of respect for those committee members. I attended every meeting and know how much work they put into this effort. I remind the neighbors that those meeting recordings can be found on YouTube at SIO Community News. Or if you were to input in a search on YouTube, just SIO Township, that will lead you to a video, and then you can click on the SIO Community News channel. And then you can search for the Fire Services Guidance Committee meetings, and you will find all those meetings recorded and posted. Please don't interrupt me. The protests are a result of residents not trusting local officials. This is why it is so important for our officials to behave with honor and integrity. I hope the residents of SIO Township will vote to approve the fire SAD. Thank you much for the extra time.
Thank you, Rob. Would anyone else like to speak? Please raise your hand.
Jonathan wanted to.
He lowered his hand. He's still on. Would anyone else like to speak? Christie, Jonathan didn't want to speak. Okay, I'll go back and do a lot of talk and see.
Very frustrating. I've been trying to unmute. And yeah, anyhow, hey, everybody. So I, like many of the other folks who have spoken tonight, have spent considerable number of hours sitting through meetings, listening to the issues and informing ourselves. Well, they do. I I don't really pay attention that often, but I do attend the meetings. And the one thing I can tell you is that as much distrust abound for this supervisor and for this board and the shenanigans that they've pulled with money, the lack of accountability from our treasurer, the lack of clarity in some significant problems that we're still uncovering every couple of weeks, gives me no faith in this board, this current board, to administer these funds or even be responsible for the money. There's no way I could support this if the board was to be responsible for these funds. Fortunately, and I've paid very close attention to the detail. Fortunately, these funds will be managed, requested, and administered by Chiefhood. There are a number of trustees I trust. But I know from many interactions and from discussing this with others, Chiefhood can be trusted fiscally as well as with our safety. When he first interviewed for the role, I spoke with him. He gave me an idea that I've since used in my companies and my employees, and that is all financial details are posted outside my door. Nowadays, we use Google Sheets or the company server, but you get my point. Chiefhood is the person who will be responsible for these funds. These funds are for the future, not for the current or the past. We have neglected our firefighters for years. It took the efforts of trustee Carrie to draw attention to the terrible mold and repair issues that were required. And it's taken countless effort from other folks who have spoken here tonight to uncover and highlight the financial shenanigans and malfeasance we've seen from this treasurer and supervisor. It doesn't stop. It never does. But fortunately, Chiefhood is in place and has remained in place and will be in place to manage this going forward. And so having been on the fence for the last couple of weeks, I have listened tonight. I have faith in the chief, and I can support this. I can also support a new supervisor and a new treasurer next year. So stay tuned, folks. We're going to get rid of them. Take care.
Thank you, Jonathan. I do not see any other hands raised. Actually, say I protest, but I do protest. Why did I have to stay there?
Let me make sure. Can you remind me, Teresa, yeah, let me see.
Patrice.
Sure, I'll protest too if that's necessary.
Patrice. And Larry, I have you both noted as protesting. Thank you.
Did anyone else, before we close the public hearing, is there anyone else present who hasn't yet spoken who would like to make sure that they are registered as protesting because that is part of the purpose of the of this public hearing?
Does it have to be protest by property?
No, just your name and address.
Name and address. And we did receive, I I didn't mention this earlier, but we did receive six written protests, and those those were registered. Rob, in his comment, reminded me of that. So if you if you haven't yet spoken and you want to protest, this is the moment to do it.
Will you be honest protest to? Right, Charles.
Gotcha, Charles.
What is the effect of protesting?
It it by protesting at this hearing, you're reserving your right to challenge the assessment before the Michigan Tax Tribunal.
William Gordon, I'd like to register protest as well. Four four zero eight Cory Circle.
Got it.
Okay, unless there's anyone else.
We're going to get a chance to hear from you guys.
Well, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then there'll be a time for board discussion. And and I suppose if people want to respond. I'd like to call, or I guess do we seek a motion to close the the public hearing at eight nineteen?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, okay. Motion by no support by Flintoff. Do we need a roll call to do it or no?
No.
No, just all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. All right, so we are adjourned at eight nineteen. And now if members of the board would like or
Public hearing is closed.
Yeah, public hearing. I'm sorry, yes. Public hearing is closed. We're not adjourned. The board
We might hear from the chief and then go around.
Yeah, that's 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 fine. Want to respond to some of the questions or comments?
Yeah. So I think I tried to respond to many of the folks who spoke while 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 they were still up here. One resident mentioned. There was a resident that asked about funding. Prior to two thousand ten, the fire department was funded out of the general fund before a dedicated knowledge was created for the fire department. I can get your data from that point forward and the and how that's changed over the last thirteen years. Prior to that, I don't know.
I can help you with that.
Great. That's something definitely we'll get. Mr. Murdy mentioned Wagner and Liberty. I did the, well, we're, I'm sorry, Wagner and SIO Church related to Salina Fire Department. I did the Google Maps. They're about two miles farther from us to get to that intersection, so we would still be quicker. That's not to say if we were to construct this station and they asked for additional help, that we wouldn't agree to that. However, that would be a supplemental agreement come before the board. So there would be an evaluation period. So I I would agree, there's a potential there. But I there's been no communication between me and that fire chief, Chief Spurley, and Salina related to that. And you did have one other question. How do we determine a call? Quite honestly, I've sat in our dispatch center and on those border calls. If the dispatcher puts the dot on the north side of the road, they dispatch SIO. If they put it on the south side of SIO Church, they dispatch Salina. So they base it on the best info they have and guess. And they get it wrong sometimes. As an example, Salina was dispatched to SIO Church and Wagner for a head-on crash, which turned out to be almost to Liberty. So they were almost a mile off well, well into our jurisdiction. We did have a resident talk about ice storms and and other storms. That event we had was probably two weeks ago now, that big ice storm, or I'm sorry, the the windstorm that we lost power. Also with the ice storm, whenever we have an imminent threat of severe weather, we call in extra people because we know we don't get help. Two weeks ago, we had nine folks on duty manning five different vehicles, myself, the assistant chief included, going out handling calls and blocking roadways and and trying to manage the whatever we had. Fortunately, we did not have fire in that time period because of just them, the nine of us. Because we had no other help. In fact, we couldn't respond to reported structure fire and assist Dexter during that storm. We had, we were unable to respond. Mr. Pattinson had a couple of questions or comments he wanted me to reaffirm. One, this will completely replace that original millage that voters approved. It goes away. It no longer exists. It can't be levied for anything because it's no longer there. It's gone. Our sole source of funding for the fires, if voters approve this, this fall, is the what you put your yes or no to at this question. If the voters don't approve this this fall, that one point three five remains in place as our sole source of funding. This will gradually increase over time. He's absolutely right. When we open the station, and my expectation is with voter approval twenty twenty six, we'll see the biggest increase. We'd be hiring six folks at nine hundred thousand dollars and about a half a million dollars in building costs. After that, year after year, and expect about another four hundred and fifty thousand dollars as we continue to add folks to our fully staffed up. So so twenty thirty one, we could potentially see where this ends up. That's you know, I I I don't anticipate us needing the full three point seven five, but I've got a firefighter's contract that extends for another two years. I don't know what those negotiations will be like, and I can't I can't see what the next three contracts will look like either. So the the fixed costs will be covered by a bond issue on the capital millage. Once we, again, with voter approval, we we have a plan in place, we get construction bids, we know how much it costs. That's a fixed cost going forward. We bond that out, and we make the payments over the next twelve to thirteen years, and then that millage goes away. It still exists on the books, but there's no taxes coming out unless we look for more property to to make sure we have somewhere to expand in the future. That being said, I think I answered most of the questions. Any board members that manager, I'd be happy to answer any question you folks have as well.
Why don't we go around? People, do you want to start over here? Want to go first?
Sure. Okay, I don't know. We keep looking at Christie. We don't know what's happening. Gillian Carey. I, when I got involved in the township, this was during the GFL viesco, when that contract was being in plan, well, the plan was, you know, I don't know if you went to the four informational meetings, didn't sit right with me. There was a lot of issues that just I didn't know. I didn't know anything. I was just like you, you know, going to work and, you know, raising my kids. But I got involved because things didn't smell right. So I started doing research, and from there, here I am. I am for residents. I am for staff. Regarding the fire department, when that, when the, let's see, that was in two thousand nineteen when that came up for to be on the ballot. I was wondering, why do we need this? So I got involved with the fire department and asking them about their needs. That one point three five, actually, the firefighters at that time didn't even want that because it wasn't going to help them, and it wasn't going to be enough. With that said, I went into the fire to fire station. It was awful. There was water literally coming through the roof, through the walls. It blew out the wall. There's there's an MLive article. There is mold. I think when you did the remodel, there was a rat's nest in it. This is what our guys that put their lives on the line for us were living with. The big doors were literally, the hinges were coming off the wall. Do you know why all of this was happening? Because our township did not take our infrastructure seriously. They did not pay attention. They did other things, but not that. Am I, right now, things are getting better. I can't say they're perfect. We have a we have a ways to go. When Chiefhood was hired, I went through that process with them. I was at every meeting when they interviewed. I think there was two or three. No, that there was five altogether. And I'm so glad that Chiefhood was hired. He's done so much. Our guys over there, please stop in there and talk with them. They're just down to earth. They they do complain, but not to a lot of people. I hear it. And it's a lot better than it used to be. Their morale has skyrocketed. But they I was appalled at how our township was treating our staff, utilities as well. So my thing about being on this board is to hold my board members accountable, make sure our planning commission is holding what is important. I go to these planning commission meetings when they do development agreements and they have these community benefits. They weren't even including the fire department. I went there and I was, why aren't we? Why aren't we putting money towards this? Why aren't we finding other money? Because you know what happens when we screw up? We pay for it through our taxes. So this is why it's so important to be involved. So regarding the fire department, we've come a long way, but with all the developments going in, with everything that we have, that our needs are, that we should have had at least ten years ago, we need to have this in front of the the voters. I'm not saying to vote for it or not. That's totally up to you. But it has to be in front of the voters for you to decide. There's other things. Yes, we have we have issues with our finances, with our finance department. I'm not going to, you know, make things sound as great, but we're worth really working on it, and we're holding us accountable. Also, you know, the ten-year sad that Mr. Murdy was talking about, no, that wasn't done properly. So you have every right not to distrust us or not to trust us, but we are working towards trust by our actions and getting involved. And I do encourage you to watch the movies. Actually, some people say it's better than Netflix, but you know. Go to SIO Community News, go to our website, watch the videos and get educated. And again, it's up to you. We're here to work for you. We're here to make sure that our our community is safe. That's the number one. I guess that's it. Is there, do you have any questions, I guess?
Why don't we keep going around?
Okay.
Sure. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I really want to let you know, we sincerely appreciate hearing where we're missing the mark on the lack of information, like the good questions about looking at the population rise versus SEV. How do those correlate? Mr. Boyle, your analysis, thank you. I'll be looking more at that, and I will encourage you to keep going back to our website, where we're trying to push out as much information as possible. And I know that the chief and I and everyone else is committed to getting more and more information out there. I want to say that I I joined as clerk. I was fortunate to be appointed in June twenty nineteen and then elected in November twenty twenty. It was one month after I was here that the board 2020. It was one month after I was here that the board was presented with the decision about whether to place the 1.35 mills on that November 2019 election. And with the information I had before me, I said, yes, I supported it. And in retrospect, I wish I would have known more. Honestly, had I known the lack of analysis, the lack of justification there was for that 1.35, I, I shouldn't have supported it. But as we know more, know better, we do better. And what I learned was, as David Reed has said, I think as Jim Adams had said about the former, you know, reputation of the culture of the Sial Fire Department, you know, that's changed. And as I learned more about the, you know, decades of neglect for the fire department, but also need to improve, professionalize, build capacity of our finance staff, and to provide more and more transparent reporting to voters. That's something I'm fully committed to. We, we have a long ways to go, but what I can say about this effort, this question, that will be before voters on November 7, is the Fire Services Guidance Committee pulled together the, the best planning and analysis I've seen here in Sial Township on any question we've put on the ballot. So shame on us for not doing this level of analysis for every other ballot question that we've put before voters, quite frankly. The Township Road 10-year SAD not managed the way it should have been. But that said, the Fire Services Guidance Committee really is making up for lost time, as David Reed said as well. There have been, not just in the area of fire services here, but unfortunately, at the board level, there was a lot of board, assuming everything was going okay, assuming because the fire chief wasn't asking for resources, that they weren't needed. Assuming that having a small township fire department that was still based on the old paid-on-call model, when we weren't having enough qualified paid-on-call firefighters, was going to be good enough. So I have to say, this ask, it's, it's a big ask. It's a really, really big ask. It is making up for lost time. And in the months that we spent on the Fire Services Guidance Committee, and then probably three more months of deliberation at this table. And I want to tell you a little bit about the questions we asked and debated. One, should we put it on the ballot? Shamefully, the legislature would allow us to just assess it at the board table, just as we did with the Townshipwide Road SAD. And I think it's up to eight or nine mills. And I've been, as I did my research, I've, I've been quite sufficiently horrified that many communities just make the decision at the board table for these police and fire services special assessments. So one, absolutely important that it go to voters. Absolutely. And second, splitting it into two questions. And one of the important points there is, though, you know, it's like, why are there two questions instead of one? And it's one more thing to try to communicate about. Overall, we're asking for less money than we would if we combined it into one. And it gives voters a chance to say, do we want to increase the operating to fully staff that first station? Or do we want to increase the operating and build that second station? So on the ballot, there are going to be two questions. And we're putting it out there as transparently as possible. You may say yes or no. But what I'm proud about with this question is it's an honest question. I think it's a fair question, and it's based on good analysis. No matter what happens on November 7, every single year under PA 33, and this year, it would probably be around November 14. The board hasn't called it yet, but we have an annual public hearing that we're required to have to say, okay, chief, of that 1.35 mil, or of that 3.75 mil, whatever it is, you know, show us your expenses and how much do you need? Well, because we have capped it too low for so long, 1.35, 0.9, you know, it's always been the maximum, right? We've even had to supplement from our general fund from time to time. What I would hope for, should the voters approve this on November 7, is then on November 14, in each of those annual hearings where we're going to set the December 1 levy, is that the chief and that all the residents, and you'll get a public notice about this as well, every single year before that annual hearing, to come out and set that level at just what is needed to cover the projected expenses and no more. And I trust residents, and I trust the chief and this board in public as we make that decision, to make the right decision, so that we do have to justify those expenses every single year before that final number is placed on the December 1 winter tax bill. So to the chief's point, we've got estimates, and in the public hearing notice, we saw this graph here that kind of estimates how it would play out. Those are just estimates at this point in time of what the board might be asked to set that at for that December 1. So I just wanted to share that because one thing I'm proud of with this ask is, it puts in as much accountability as we can, as many of those mechanisms as we can, or on the board, over the financial decisions each year, so that the board will be setting what that cap is. And, and hopefully we'll all be benefiting from having adequate fire services. So that's a little bit of the process on the election side of things. The election is November 7, and for voters, you will start receiving communications from me as your clerk. If you're on the permanent absentee voter list and all of that, that will be starting by the 1st of September. Thank you.
My experience with the fire department as a Sial Township resident, my first experience was, I was very thankful and relieved to have them respond amazingly quickly when my infant daughter had a seizure. And it wasn't a fire, but it was an emergency, and we didn't know what to do. It was the first time that she'd ever had a seizure, and the fire department was right there and, and responding. And I don't, I don't know that, you know, it was life-saving, but it certainly was immediate assistance. And, you know, she's fine. Now she's working as a teacher of other young children. So I, I, you know, had a place in my heart for the Sial Fire Department going back many, many years. I didn't really know much about the fire department and its operations and its, you know, the different challenges it faces until I was in this role as supervisor. But I've been learning a lot, and I've enjoyed working with Chief Hood. And I second everyone who said tonight that he is a good steward of these resources. I think he's thinking ahead. He's doing a good job of building a good culture for the fire department. And I have tremendous respect for him and for other, the other members of the fire departments. I think this, what, what this really is about is, is looking forward. It's looking at the needs of the community as it's grown and as it continues to grow, and doing our best as, you know, temporarily in this role of being in charge and sort of serving the township in this capacity, of planning ahead, of, of looking ahead and thinking, what are the resources that this community needs? What are the most important services that this government provides? And I think one thing that this board, there was no question, I think was unanimous about, is that safety, public safety, and fire services and emergency response, that's a core function of Sial Township. Now, people can differ about, you know, how to deliver those services, what, you know, resources we need, but I trust the analysis that was done with, by members of the fire department and our Fire Services Guidance Committee. They worked very hard last fall and very quickly. And a lot of the resources, the work product of that committee are available on the website. So I encourage people who are looking for more information to look there. I think actually the comparables are there as well.
It should be.
It should be. If they're not, they will be. I know several people asked for comparables of how this proposal measures up against other communities in this area or other comparable townships in the state. We do have that information. And if it's not there yet, it will be soon on the website, easily available for people to look at. But if there's anything that you want in terms of information that you don't find on that website or through other resources that are available from the township, please let us know. I know that we want to answer questions. We want to respond to any issues that people have with this. It was a choice to put it before the voters, but that, again, the, the board was unanimous in that decision as well. So I, I, I support this. I know, Larry, you were asking, I think it was you who asked, where, where are each of us on this? I support this. I support it because I think it's a well-thought-through proposal for delivering a core service for the township. It's addressing a real need right now, but it's also building our capacity to respond to emergencies into the future. I'll turn it over to Treasurer Palmer with that.
Historian, do you remember the first, I remember the dedication. I am very appreciative of what Andy has done. We never had a projected need that he has worked hard and committed. So the thing is, is now all of us figuring out how we can work that plan out because I agree with a lot of the people that spoke tonight, that they're looking at the whole amount. We know that that's not the plan, but it's a chocolate change. So now we need to figure out how we work the plan. Pick the priorities. It's, it's all needed, but we have to prioritize and then go from there. Thanks, Andy.
I support this. I live in the southeastern part of the township. And I want to address a couple specific issues that were raised by residents, and I thank all of you for being here and your input. There was a resident, I don't believe he's here now, who raised the issue of why is the fire department getting into emergency transport and ambulance services? I want to remind people that there have been issues with Huron Valley ambulance over the last several years, and their ability to transport patients from accident scenes. And several local fire departments have stepped up to fulfill a gap in transport services in Washtenaw County to hospitals. There was an MLive article, I looked at it briefly here while I was listening to the commentary about this issue. And it's been noted that Washtenaw County's ambulance service is critically understaffed. And that has led to a broad pattern of unacceptable delays. The article noted that in 2021, the average response times for life-threatening incidents in Washtenaw County went up. Huron Valley ambulance failed to meet its own response threshold in 2,823 serious calls in Washtenaw County, according to its own data that year. One in four EMT and paramedic positions at Huron Valley ambulance is open. So I would, I want to compliment our fire department for being proactive, initiating this, this new service, and filling a need, providing better care for residents in Sial Township. I also comment on this as a registered nurse. I know there was someone who spoke, she said she was a registered nurse. I was a former emergency department nurse at the university. And I had a fair amount of experience with these issues. It was many years ago, but I've always been aware of emergency transport issues, and I listen when I hear about these issues. So I fully support Chief Hood. He has done an excellent job. His leadership is outstanding. And I encourage people who are here tonight to get more involved. It's difficult when you come into something one time or two times, and you haven't been presented with the issues and the facts, the data, the problems over a period of months or years. And I think with more involvement, it, it gives you a greater perspective and a greater understanding. So, thank you, and thank you.
Give you an opportunity, Joyce, to comment if you'd like.
Oh, sure. You know, from my perspective, I certainly have a great deal of respect for the fire department from a personal perspective as well as professionally. And I've had the experience both ways. I think the one thing that's really important to consider is where the fire department used to be and what you're trying to achieve moving forward into the future. And so part of what is being requested is that you participate in building capacity within Sial Township, so that the service level will be the standard that you really expect. You know, I've often stated with my kids, for example, you, you pay for what you get. So if, in fact, the resources are not there, the service level may not be there as well. And I think it's really important that the township has excellent service, and that's what Chief Hood is trying to accomplish with this particular SAD. In addition to that, there were questions raised related to the increased revenue based on growth within the township. And I think the other part that has to be considered are the increased expenses as we've grown as well. And Chief Hood did put together an analysis that can be shared with the public in that regard. So basically, I, I support this effort. I think it is necessary. I think it aligns with the growth that is taking place here in Sial Township.
And trustee Riser.
Folks, hello. Hello to those of you here and those of you watching on Zoom. I had another meeting to attend, at which we went into closed session to discuss litigation, so I had to be there for that. But I was also watching, as Christie can attest, on Zoom and listening to you, to the comments. So I heard you, Mr. Boyle. I heard, I heard you, Pam. Great presentations on, on both sides. I heard the people online talking, so I want to apologize. And I, but I, I was listening to it, and while driving here, I had it on my phone, not looking at it, just listening to the comments. So I'd like to, you know, I work for a, a city to the east of here, where we have the luxury of six fire stations. And I, one of my assignments for that city is to, in part, support the fire department. So I've got a soft spot in my heart for fire departments. But I also know that we need the data. And I know you're a data guy, Mr. Boyle, but I also know that Mark Perry is. And I know that the Fire Services Committee did a lot of data, did it, researched it, crunched a lot of numbers. of data, did a, researched it, crunched a lot of numbers and generated a lot of data. So I, I, I point you to their work, too. I appreciate all the work. David Reed was on that, he spoke out, Ryan Yapo was on that, Bob Hyde was on that, there are others who I'm forgetting, our Clerk Flintoff was on that as well. So I appreciate the work that they did on this. On a personal level, I live on the southeast, and the southeast is a really dense area of the township. There are like four condo associations, there are four different neighborhoods, there are a couple of apartments, and that's just on Liberty Sciop Ridge and Sciop Church. And then there's the new dense area coming across the street from the Lipwag business. So there's Liberty and Wagner, there's going to be Dents living there, a lot of people there. There's the new Sciop view that's just, just, just west of that. So things are really changing on the southeast side of the, of, of the township. And if, oh, I forgot to say at the outset, whether I support it, yeah, I've got the red and white and black sign in my yard, drive by on Abigail Way, and you'll see that sign, it shows my support, but to get that out of the way. But with respect to the, the density on the southeast side, we only have one station. Dexter has two, Ann Arbor Township has two, Pittsfield Township has three. Now, I know we're not those townships, and they might have different numbers than we do with respect to density, but we're growing, we're getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So we need to plan for the future. You have the opportunity on an annual basis to hold our feet to the fire, to hold his feet to the fire. When Hood comes to us and say, hey, I need this money, and then you can say, what for, chief? Why do we need it? What do you, is it for, is it for personnel? Is it for material? Is it for structure? Is it for this? So you have the annual basis. He, he's got to, he's got to give a sales pitch and convince the board and, and convince, frankly, the public every year that this is needed. I, I asked a, a, a couple chiefs and a couple supervisors about, hey, does Sciop need another fire station? Because I wanted to know, and I say, yeah, you do. And, and the supervisor says, and then another unnamed township, yeah, you do. So, so it's like, it's time, as much as it hurts, to dig into our pockets on an annual basis and pay the piper and pay for the safety that we all want, for that security to be safe in our homes when we drive, whether it's fire, whether it's an ambulance, whether it's a crash. And, and so, you know, I look forward to this, you know, voting this November on this issue. Can't say how I'm going to vote, but you know the signs in my yard. Thank you.
With that, I think we've concluded going around. It's now time for a motion to adjourn. Is someone ready to make that motion? Moved by Flintoff, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. Eight fifty-four.
Thank you, everybody.